I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. We have a motion to certify closed session.
I certify. That's the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Here in a second, are there... Roll call.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Oenby.
Aye.
Ms. Sarza, can you call the roll?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Oenby.
Here.
We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, move approval of the agendas presented.
Second. Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Sarza?
Ms. Oenby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
She did, you do it first.
The next action item is our announcements from the superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening. At our last meeting, we shared with you the goals of our new strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, along with several of the strategies that we will be using to achieve those goals. We noted that during the presentation that we want to harness the power and passion of our teachers, parents, and community members to create and support meaningful student learning opportunities for all children. Tonight, I would like to show you just one example of how our community is engaging in that work with us through partnerships like the one we have with William &amp; Mary Griffin School Partners. Let's take a look at the partnership.
The goals of the Griffin School Partnerships Initiative focus both on outcomes for students within Williamsburg James City County, as well as obviously William &amp; Mary students as well. For students within the community, we're hoping to support the work that teachers do in developing students' academic and social emotional development, whether they're doing mentoring work with students in a third grade classroom, or working supporting math teachers at high school level, for instance, and also just building the sense of community more generally.
I think it's really incredible to watch the students progress during your time in the classroom. I've seen students who have struggled to memorize the letters of the alphabet go from, you know, that starting point to being able to read full words in a kindergarten classroom. Students who are really struggling with something like their first one-step algebra problems, being able to solve those equations even within a couple weeks of my being there. And that's a really incredible thing for me to observe during my time working with students. That and getting to form the relationships with them is really incredible.
When I was in second grade, my teammates did make that thing of, oh, I don't want to volunteer, I have to plan an extra station. But really, I'm planning an extra station anyway because I do three math rotations for 30 minutes. So it's a station that I'm already going to have to have planned. It's just, I'm going to have an adult there to better run that station instead of having that kid independently work on something and cannot really understand it.
I've been working a lot with groups within the classroom. So we'll do activities based on what we're learning. You know, in kindergarten, again, we do a lot of things with these counting cubes. And then here in sixth grade, we're doing inequalities. We did stuff with the whiteboards in terms of group activities and making sure that they're all working together. And that's a great way to get involved with the community, it's a great way to get back, and it's a great way to help these kids be the best they can be.
In thinking about how the tutors function with the kids, you know, like I said, there is this mentoring part. They come in as role models, and I don't know if that's really known to the tutors when they start, but the kids look up to them. These are middle schoolers, they're so impressionable and eager to have an example of what it's like to be a young adult, an example of what it's like to be independent and to use those skills. So that's what they see them as. I've had kids tell me that the tutors represent sources of kindness in their life, that they're people who teach them social skills, these are people who teach them how to navigate tricky things with friends, kind of coach them through situations about how to make better relationships.
I think it's really that sense of the connections that our students are able to make with teachers and with schools that keeps them coming back and seeing the purpose in what they do.
This relationship really is a win-win for both our students and the William &amp; Mary students. It's exactly the type of relationship we are striving to build with all community organizations. As you know, the expansion of partnership and volunteer opportunities is a strategy of goal three of our plan. So I would encourage any member of our viewing public who may be interested in forming a partnership with WJC Schools to contact the Division's Department of Communications and Engagement by calling 603-6400. Working together, we will elevate beyond excellence. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. And I wanted to mention to our viewing public, our Chair, Ms. Cook, is feeling under the weather this morning, and so I'm pitching for the first time, so excuse all my failings tonight. Thank you.
We'll get through it.
So the next item on the agenda is 5.0. This is an opportunity for citizens to provide comment, so I will defer to Ms. Hummel, who will share our guidelines for public comment.
Right, thank you. This is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the Board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The Board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that students refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the Board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Eric Van.
I would like to... Is this thing on?
Yes, it is. We can hear you fine.
My name is Eric. I go to James River Elementary School. I would like to protest for sixth graders, I mean, high school to get, to have to not get up so early. So here are the reasons why. First of all, they're going to be very tired, so that's not a really good way to start off the day, and I'm not sure they can listen that well, so I'd say that even though they can go to bed earlier, their bodies are programmed to stay up late, get up later, so, and there's a part of the mind that can't function if you get up that early that allows you to learn better. And I would also like to protest about extra recess. So, there is fact that the more recess you have, the better you're able to focus. There is a country that has 15 minute, actually 20 minutes of recess every single hour, and they have top grades, the whole country. And back to the sixth grade thing, the teachers have to get up even earlier. So I don't think that that's going to help the school day. And that's it for my speech.
Eric, let's tell my man.
Thank you very much.
Rose Roberts.
I know, too cute. Hi, my name is Rose Roberts, and I am in my fifth year of teaching at Warhild High School. I would like to start by thanking my students and parents for their support so far this year. Between the hurricane schedule changes and me not having a planning, there has been a lot of craziness in this first month of school, but they have been nothing but patient and supportive, and I really appreciate that. My main reason for being here is to ask about the makeup days that WJCC has recently enacted. I emailed central office staff last week wondering how the decision was made to use two half-days instead of the Division's dedicated makeup days. I was told we collaborated based on feedback on a decision for makeup days. We realized that the decisions will not meet the needs of every person. I understand that, but I have asked staff at a variety of levels in schools, and I'm still unsure exactly who gave feedback or collaborated on this decision. I am also questioning what the purpose of the seven designated makeup days are, if it's not for families to plan on the Division using those first. Lastly, I have questions regarding the effectiveness of back-to-school night. After a brief survey of Warhild teachers, there was an average of two to three families per class that attended. I want to know if this is consistent among all three high schools, and how we can do better to encourage more families to come to these events, and how we can do better to utilize that time for both teachers and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Loritas.
How are you? My name is Nick Loritas, and I'm the father of two middle school children at James Blair. My children were excited to attend the new middle school. My expectation as a parent is that this new school should be as good as or better than the school they were taken from. This so far has not been the case, and the lack of respect and neglect of safety that's been shown has been incomprehensible. I have read your nine-page document of areas of offenses and definitions, and in this new school year, our school has seen drugs, assault and battery, threats, bullying, defiance, and insubordination, disrespect, disruption, dress code, harassment, and discrimination. We've seen threats in appropriate language on a continuous and daily basis. It is also seen vandalism on desks, as well as the new bleachers in the gym. All these are listed as areas of offenses in your document. At what point are steps taken to address the problem for more than just a day or two? How are we going to make this a safer environment and a better learning environment for the students and teachers? This needs to be fixed quickly. Should we, as a community, have reinstated an alternative school? There used to be one before I moved here. People are already talking about getting their children out of the school next year because they don't feel safe. There needs to be enforceable consequences for children that don't want to be here and that are disruptive on a continuous and daily basis. There needs to be a defined space where children are sent if they cannot behave in the classroom besides the common area on each floor. What is that plan? The things we should be focusing on are overshadowed by the lack of respect and safety that I've been made aware of. The children work hard to achieve the grades to be successful. They should not have to work even harder to avoid harassment and conflict. In the few short weeks that my children have been in this school, they have witnessed a student flip a lunch table and go to practice after school. Numerous fights in school. A student crumple up a detention slip and throw it back at a teacher. Being removed from the class only to disrupt the class by banging on the glass and, you know, making inappropriate gestures through the windows. They have been harassed by comments from other students that are flat-out racist, and some days don't even feel like going to school because they don't feel safe. I have a student that's on the Honor Society and a student that's in Visions classes as well. They've been asked to fight on their way to the bathroom, so much that they don't feel safe going to the bathroom, as well as while they're waiting to board the bus at the end of the day. And there was an incident yesterday. You know, a child unprovoked, you know, put into a garbage can face-first while waiting for the bus. The children, that child was not in the bus this morning. The person that did it was on the bus. You know? When does this end? What kind of message are we trying to send to our children? How would you feel if that was done to you? How are you making them feel safe and showing that this will not be tolerated?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loritas.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Creasy.
Would you like to hand in your remarks, sir?
So Janet.
Would you like to hand in your remarks to the clerks so that we'll get anything that you were going to say?
My name is Jeff Creasy. My youngest child is a seventh grader at James Blair Middle School. And I'm here fundamentally because he has never felt safe at James Blair Middle School. He, Nick, referenced an incident yesterday. My kid was thrown face-first into a trash can by a student at the bus area for pickup at the school that should be constantly monitored by staff. And this was done by a student who has a long, long history of behavioral problems in the school system. Well, that's an important detail. I think it's just symptomatic of really endemic problems at this school right now. And I'm going to share two, I have some long remarks. I'll actually email them to you after the meeting because I have personal notes on them. But I have two anecdotes I want to share that I think will be informative regarding the climate and culture of the school. Mrs. Stanley, who knows our family and observed Colin in math class the other day, actually described him as seeming nervous, which is a really apt description, which he agreed with when I addressed him about it. And when I asked him about it, he described feeling very uncomfortable in class. He's an extrovert, you know, he likes making people laugh, students and teachers alike. And, you know, his teachers this year have described him more as really hiding behind his book. He doesn't want to come out of his shell. And he's really effectively suppressed his personality, which is naturally very outgoing, for fear of being mocked, because that's the culture of the school right now. He's miserable there, and I quote, "I wish they'd shut that school down so my friends and I can go back to Hornsby." This may be because he finds himself around unfamiliar peers, but he's been able to always get along with anyone, and his discomfort is not because of new people, because of the overt meanness of some people in this school. His reaction appears to be a defense mechanism to avoid being the object of mean spirit in seeds observing. Finally, I want to close with some thoughts that are really difficult for me to write and share, but I want to share some of this, and you'll see more details in writing. But I really reflected on this before sharing it quite a bit. There seems to fundamentally be a student population at James Blair that has been, has really visceral negative feelings about fellow students that are from more affluent areas of Williamsburg. I don't know why this is. It's nothing that our kids have done to be targets of it. And we've done, we've raised our kids to be as colorblind as possible and never judge anything for any reason. Our older boys attend Lafayette, which is also a very diverse school racially, socially, and economically. And I can say with no hesitation whatsoever that we would move if you redistrict us out of Lafayette. We would move back into Lafayette District. That's how strong we feel about that school climate. While, you know, we saw a lot of staff from Lafayette at JBMS at Open House. We were thrilled. We thought they would, their opinions, their experience would be leveraged to great ends there. That doesn't appear to have been the case so far. While I'm sure Lafayette is no utopian, you know, post-racial, you know, paradise, they have an incredibly positive supporting environment for their entire student body, and everyone there understands there are real consequences for actions. And we don't hear of the same tensions at LHS that are happening daily at James Blair. I bring up this difficult subject because no one's going to be helped by ignoring this issue. The most at-risk kids will be left behind, managed out to another school or district, while the kids from neighborhoods that want to learn, you'll hear the rest of this, you'll be able to read the rest of these remarks that I'll email to the Board with a number of recommendations I think need to take place at James Blair Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy.
Kelly Creasy.
Thank you. Bear with me as I get through this. Yesterday, at 3:45 PM, I received a text from a good friend that I had just spoken with earlier in the day. Is Colin okay? This text is a parent's worst nightmare to receive when their child is at school and I was at work. My heart sank, as any parents would. I showed the text to my boss, and I left immediately. Sorry. On my way home, I tried calling my husband to no avail. I knew they were together at James Blair because my husband had a meeting scheduled at the school with one of his teachers, so I wasn't in full-blown panic yet. On my ride home, several people started to call to check on Colin, explaining what had happened. I still had no idea. He was picked up, waiting for the bus, by a student that he was not familiar with, that does live in our neighborhood, but does have a lengthy disciplinary record, and put in a trash can face head-first. Will Capers, our ISS, who knows my family very well from Lafayette, because Lafayette is such a close-knit community, got Colin out of the trash can. I quickly got home, very upset myself, and found a visibly shaken and tear-saying 12-year-old boy and an equally shaken father. You've heard from Jeff. I don't need to rehash what has unfolded in the past month over James Blair, but it has been a nightmare to say the least. My concern is that this nightmare will only get worse until these serious issues are addressed. We have always been very supportive of our schools here in WJCC. Our two older sons attend Lafayette and have thrived academically, athletically, and socially. Never once have either of us or my children been concerned about their safety at Lafayette, thanks to the amazing community built by the administration, staff, students, family, and the greater community. My son at James Blair does not feel the same way, and with good reason. This is echoed by many of his peers and their families. I beg you to make immediate changes in this school. I emailed the superintendent, principal, and assistant principal last week post-threat to the student body on Friday. Mr. Our principal responded, saying, "I understand your concerns, and we are putting specific measures in place that should yield immediate improvement." The next day, my son was put in a trash can. We are not meeting anyone's needs at James Blair. I ask for immediate and transparent solution to your plan to help all of our students there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creasy.
Shannon Hassan.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Hassan. I have a fifth grader at DJ Montague and a seventh grader at James Blair Middle School. First, I'm an avid volunteer in WJC Schools. I sometimes making it my full-time job. I'm always there. I've supported our education team, our teachers, students, for years. And tonight, I'm sharing my concern for James Blair. Safety is my number-one concern when I send my children to school. While my son still feels safe going to school, the things that he comes home and tells me are absurd. The vulgarities, the obscenities, the lack of accountability placed on students. I can't even repeat some of the things he's come home and said because they make me so sick. And my biggest concern is that he has now said, "Mom, don't worry, it's just middle school." That this has become the norm for him, to hear these things. It's very upsetting. He was a witness to the account in the bus pickup area yesterday. He watched the in-school suspension specialist come and help the boy out of the trash can, and then was appalled at the fact that the boy that did it was allowed to go home on the bus. He actually said to me, "Mom, they let him on the bus." Why was he allowed to go home? Why was he not sent straight to the principal's office to have discipline? It makes absolutely no sense. And these kids are seeing this on a daily basis, the disrespect to the teachers, not to mention the class size is so big that there's so much disruption, nobody's learning anything, in my opinion. I mean, we didn't have homework for the first three weeks of school because Zach said, you know, "The teachers are out of control, Mom. They can't control the students. There's, I don't have anything. I don't have anything." We were out of town for five days. He had absolutely nothing to make up when we returned, because nothing happened in the classrooms. I was under the impression that James Blair was going to be a smaller school, 600 students, we're already at capacity, but we weren't told that with a smaller school, we'd have less teachers. So 29 to 33 kids in these classrooms is absurd to me. I've emailed my concerns to the admin, to which I've suggested, can we please become a proactive school, not a reactive school? Can we have a parent forum to answer questions on lockdown safety, on all the fighting in the bathrooms? My son won't go to the bathroom by himself without a friend. Children who were in the fights are recounting the fights day after day in class, bragging about them. Nothing's done to shut it down, and it needs to be shut down sooner than later, or it's going to get worse. I'm very, very worried for everyone in that school, not just my children, but the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Omar Haslam. How are you fine? Haslam?
My name is Omar Haslam. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to express some concerns about my son, who's in sixth grade, going to James Blair School. Just feel there's no accountability. I think everybody here is doing a stellar job. They're really putting their heart and effort, they're giving up their time and what have you, but accountability to provide discipline to people that make infractions and what have you is just lacking. And as a result, you know, things don't get done. We hand gold medals as soon as people get out of the water and swim 100 meters, as it were. But as soon as somebody does an infraction, what have you, we wait a week, and by that time, it's already forgotten, and the kids are bragging, as Mrs. Hassan has said, and it just propagates further bad behavior. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes the speakers.
Next on the agenda are proposed agenda items. We have the preliminary June 2018 financial and 2018 year-end spending plan. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring to the Board a year-end spending plan with funds that are remaining in the operations budget from last year, and Ms. Barnes is going to present that information this evening.
Evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. This evening, I'll be presenting to you WJCC's year-end spending plan. It's important to note, though, that each year, this is brought to you in September and/or early October. However, our annual audit has not been completed, so the figures are preliminary and unaudited. As we go through the audit process, these numbers could change very slightly, however. The reports, though, also are those that we report to, the same numbers that we report to the State of Virginia every year by September the 15th. And my team works very hard to stay on top of this so that the information that's provided to you is accurate before passing it on to you and our funding partners. That being said, by state code, we're not allowed to carry a fund balance in our general fund, but it's also imperative that we do not operate in a deficit, so we must act in a financially responsible and conservative manner. And this leads to a surplus at the end of the year. There are also two additional points to mention. The first is that we cannot overspend our appropriated budget, and the second is that we cannot spend more revenue, more than the revenue that we've received or recognized. So the contract that the city... And tonight, I'm sharing my concern for James Blair. Safety is my number-one concern when I send my children to school. While my son still feels safe going to school, the things that he comes home and tells me are absurd. The vulgarities, the obscenities, the lack of accountability placed on students. I can't even repeat some of the things he's come home and said because they make me so sick. And my biggest concern is that he has now said, "Mom, don't worry. It's just middle school." But this has become the norm for him, to hear these things. It's very upsetting. He was a witness to the account in the bus pickup area yesterday. He watched the in-school suspension specialist come and help the boy out of the trash can, and then was appalled at the fact that the boy that did it was allowed to go home on the bus. He actually said to me, "Mom, they let him on the bus." Why was he allowed to go home? Why was he not sent straight to the principal's office to have discipline? It makes absolutely no sense. And these kids are seeing this on a daily basis, the disrespect to the teachers, not to mention the class size is so big that there's so much disruption, nobody's learning anything, in my opinion. I mean, we didn't have homework for the first three weeks of school because Zach said, "You know, the teachers are out of control, Mom. They can't control the students. There's, I don't have anything. I don't have anything." We were out of town for five days. He had absolutely nothing to make up when we returned because nothing happened in the classrooms. I was under the impression that James Blair was going to be a smaller school, 600 students, we're already at capacity, but we weren't told that with a smaller school, we'd have less teachers. So 29 to 33 kids in these classrooms is absurd to me. I've emailed my concerns to the admin, to which I've suggested, "Can we please become a proactive school, not a reactive school? Can we have a parent forum to answer questions on lockdown safety, on all the fighting in the bathrooms? My son won't go to the bathroom by himself without a friend. Children who were in the fights are recounting the fights, day after day in class, bragging about them. Nothing's done to shut it down. And it needs to be shut down sooner than later, or it's going to get worse." I'm very, very worried for everyone in that school, not just my children, but the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Omar Hasam. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to express some concerns about my son, who's in 6th grade, going to James Blair School. Just feel there's no accountability. I think everybody here is doing a stellar job. They're really putting their heart and effort. They're giving up their time and what have you. But accountability to provide discipline to people that make infractions and what have you is just lacking. As a result, you know, things don't get done. We hand gold medals as soon as people get out of the water and swim 100 meters, as it were. But as soon as somebody does an infraction or what have you, we wait a week, and by that time, it's already forgotten, and the kids are bragging, as Mrs. Hassan has said. And it just propagates further bad behavior. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes the speakers.
Next on the agenda are proposed agenda items. We have the preliminary June 2018 financial and 2018 year-end spending plan. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring to the Board a year-end spending plan with funds that are remaining in the operations budget from last year, and Ms. Barnes is going to present that information this evening.
Evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. This evening, I'll be presenting to you WJCC's year-end spending plan. It's important to note, though, that each year, this is brought to you in September and/or early October. However, our annual audit has not been completed, so the figures are preliminary and unaudited. As we go through the audit process, these numbers could change very slightly, however. The reports, though, also are those that we report to, the same numbers that we report to the state of Virginia every year by September the 15th. And my team works very hard to stay on top of this so that the information that's provided to you is accurate before passing it on to you and our funding partners. That being said, by state code, we're not allowed to carry a fund balance in our general fund, but it's also imperative that we do not operate in a deficit, so we must act in a financially responsible and conservative manner. And this leads to a surplus at the end of the year. There are also two additional points to mention. The first is that we cannot overspend our appropriated budget, and the second is that we cannot spend more revenue, more than the revenue that we've received or recognized. So the contract that the city and the county have with Williamsburg James City County Public Schools requires that the school division submit a year-end spending plan to both bodies, and the allocated funds must be returned to the county and the city. Our funding partners may then choose to approve or not to approve our spending plan as it's presented. So this year, we ended the fiscal year with a surplus of $2,735,392, which is 2% of the division's total operating budget. However, we're required to return a minimum of $662,691, which includes $600,000 to the county and $62,691 to the city at its proportionate share. This year, we'll be returning $683,924. Therefore, this brings the actual fiscal year '18 surplus down to $2,51,469, or 1.5% of the division's total operating budget. Part of the surplus, more than $440,000, is due to savings in fuel and utilities. During the budget process, we conduct a running three-year analysis and review of the history of our expenditure lines. So when building the fiscal year '19 budget, savings were partially reallocated to provide for fuel and utilities in the budget for James Blair Middle School while taking into consideration the fluctuation for prices in fuel and utilities. A large portion of the savings is also a result of attrition. Just over $2 million was saved due to attrition, and attrition is a natural employment cycle for most organizations. Often, when employees retire or resign, the person being hired is one with fewer years of experience resulting in a lower cost, and attrition savings can vary widely. So there were savings in the transportation area alone of more than $370,000 in fiscal year '18. Also in fiscal year '18, WJCC had difficulty filling bus driver and bus aid positions. However, the school board conducted a salary study, and bus drivers' salaries were adjusted for fiscal year '19. So also for fiscal year '19, $813,834 in estimated attrition savings were used to balance the division's operating budget. So here are the highlights of the division's proposed spending plan. The replacement of buses and maintenance vehicles, the purchase of textbooks, remodeling of schools' entrances, and the purchase of other safety and maintenance-related items are included. To note, though, these items were items that could not be received, purchased and received prior to June 30th. So that's another reason why we put them in the year-end spending plan. Also to note, there are several projects that are currently, appear in the year-end spending plan, but you'll also see them as recommendations from the CIP committee that I'll present later. We're fortunate and appreciative that our funding partners provided funding for the entrance redesigns to be completed in fiscal year '19. And there are currently two schools that have not had their entrances redesigned or the budget allocated for this, and that's Matthew Whaley Elementary School and Jamestown High School. So the estimated cost to redesign Matthew Whaley's entrance is $15,000, and the estimated cost to redesign Jamestown High School's is $128,600. So the next item is to replace the bleachers at Tuana Middle School. They're the original set for the building, and the estimated cost to replace them is The next in the plan is the replacement of the track at War Hill High School. The track is in need of repair and is not usable for meets. So the estimated cost to replace the track is $509,250. We're also requesting the removal of the well at Berkeley Middle School, and this has been on the CIP project request list several times. The estimated cost to remove the well is $79,414. We have also been renting portable field lights for use at Jamestown High School, as well as War Hill. The estimated cost to purchase the 10 lights is $80,000. Next, seven of our schools reported to our staff that a total of 67 cafeteria tables across the division need to be replaced. So the estimated cost to support this request is $87,100. So we currently have a 20-year-old box truck that is used by the maintenance department. It has 152,000 miles on it, and it gets six miles per gallon. The cost to replace this vehicle is $48,056. Let me see, we're also requesting the purchase of snow-removal equipment to assist our operations staff in clearing the snow from our school grounds. The estimated cost to support this request is $60,000. Currently, at the central office, there are 90 parking spaces to accommodate 125 employees. This request is to pave additional spaces for parking, and the estimated cost for this is $28,500. We currently have 23 buses that have more than 250,000 miles on them, and we are requesting six buses to continue with the replacement cycle. So the cost to support this request is estimated at $660,000. The final request is that for new textbooks. Board members, you have been provided a list that constitutes a portion of the needed textbooks, that, as you may recall, during the recession, the purchase of textbooks was put on hold. So this will enable us to begin to get back on track, and the estimated cost for the textbooks is $305,555. So the total cost for our year-end spending plan is $2,51,469. Thank you for your attention, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have at this time.
Do we have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm concerned about returning that much money back to the county, and I'm wondering if there aren't some CIP projects from 2021 that could be moved to 2020 so that we could use more of that money. I know that in the past, there have been times when virtually almost all of that money was either devoted to CIP or requests were made to use funds for additional operating costs that hadn't been anticipated the year before. So I'm, and maybe I'm the only one, it just seems like, and I know we're spending a lot, you know, we're using a lot of it, but that's still over half a million dollars, and I'm just wondering, I was looking at some of the projects for 2021 that we could use some of that money for and move those back into 2020. Has there been discussion about that?
Well, we were actually, the items that we chose to put in the year-end spending plan were those that we felt had the most urgent need and that were not already in the CIP plan.
Are you talking about moving forward? You're talking about moving forward next year?
Right.
Look at the fact that there might be this huge another situation.
No, no, no.
Is that not what you're saying? What are you saying?
No, no. I'm looking at the overall plan.
Right.
And I'm looking at 2021, that column, all those things down there. And thinking...
Dr. Beers, we could do that. We could look at moving them up. However, we would still have to wait. If we move CIP, I don't know if there's anything in 2021 that could be done immediately. Certainly something we could look at.
If I could intervene, it's a great question, and if you notice on some of the things, you will actually see them reappear in the CIP that's going to be presented tonight. So for example, the War Hill High School track replacement is a CIP item, and we've actually asked to use the money to do that CIP item. So in this list, which is exactly, I think, what you're suggesting.
And I looked at that list and glad to see that we did it with, you know, that we used most of that money up. I'm just, you know, and, you know, maybe this is just a, are we short buses? I mean, can we buy some more buses? Can we buy a couple of more buses? Get rid of some?
Well, that's why we've put six in the plan.
But could we use eight?
Well, you can never have too many.
That's what I mean. That's what I'm talking about.
We do have those.
Do you have buses?
But to maintain the schedule.
Do you have buses in the 2021?
I'm sorry, not in the CIP because replacement buses are not, don't meet the criteria to go in CIP.
We don't need any additional buses.
At six at this time is, will keep us on schedule.
Ms. Barnes, if I could ask a clarifying question. So the $680,000 that we're giving back to the county, that money, it goes back to our CIP. Is that correct?
Yes, it does.
So that $680,000 that we give back to the county, they allocate that to our CIP. That's where that money goes.
So it will come back to us in the form of CIP, at least.
Are you sure about that?
I did speak with staff and have been advised that...
Why do we give it back?
That $600,000, I think that helps them with planning for their CIP as well because, from what I understand, it's already incorporated in their five-year plan.
So does that allow them to reduce what they would normally have given us by $600,000 because we gave them $600,000?
They don't reduce the operating budget. However, I believe when we entered into the agreement to build the Lafayette Gym, there was an agreement made at that time that over the next several years that we would reallocate back to the county and city for the payment of the Lafayette Gym $600,000 per year. That is, I believe, for a amount of time. It's not forever. But I think the key with this, the end-of-year spending plan that we've brought forward to you does actually fund or ask to fund some items that would be in the CIP that we're taking care of with end-of-year spending.
You see, but I'm looking at $600,000.
I get that, yes, sir.
I understand, yeah.
And if the county, you know, and maybe they're not going to like that, but if they can reduce the amount of money that they are going to allocate for our CIP by $600,000 because we gave them the $600,000 back.
They wouldn't do that for our CIP. I would imagine...
Somebody just said they're going to use that money for our CIP.
Right. So they're not, that will come back to us. That's not reducing their allocation. It's just aiding them in providing the allocation.
I think our biggest challenge is, as a school system, we can't spend down to zero.
I get that.
I mean, you can't come even close because in a budget of our size, 2% left over is not as quite the norm. And so two or three years ago, when we started this end-of-year spending plan that became the way of doing business, then it's upon us to bring items that we weren't able to buy before the end of the fiscal year because we couldn't have them delivered on time. So we have several of those in the end-of-year spending, but then there's also some use of the money for potential CIP items. So for example, the War Hill Track is in the CIP right now. If it's approved in end-of-year spending, we will pull it from our CIP document because we'll have had it approved through this process instead and can take care of it, and that reduces our CIP request. So the one is working with, hand in hand with the other right now with several of these items.
The other thing about the year-end spending plan is that if it is approved, we can actually purchase those things in fiscal year '19.
Right.
Otherwise, we have to wait on it to be re-appropriated.
Absolutely.
You're just wanting to know why we can't have more than, you know, some, why $600,000 gets, why that number?
I know. With such a huge budget, I know it's not going to buy a lot of stuff, but it's just, I have, I'm, I don't know, I'm puzzled that we're giving money back. Because we've been so frugal and so helpful.
I mean, Dr. Heron pointed out the first biggest problem. The second biggest problem is that we're funded by both the county and the city.
Right. No, you're right.
And so we have to work in partnership with the county and the city. And so a little bit of this...
I live in the county, and that's the biggest chunk that's going back.
And a little bit of this is Robin Peter to pay Paul. And so it helps the county to fund our '19 capital plan by giving them our $18 back. And so there's a, so the school system works in conjunction with county and city staff to make sure that we work together to fund not only our operating budget but also our capital budget. So that's, that gets, that dance gets to be a little interesting every year. The second question I had was, so in 2018, we had $2 million in attrition savings, and in 2019, we've budgeted 813. Is $2 million what we normally get per year, or is that a bubble? And is 800 more like our typical, or do we have a feel for that?
First of all, when you're looking at the attrition, when you build the budget, you build it based on what you currently have, your current mix of employees. And so while there was $2 million in savings, that wasn't taken out from the previous year in the, that savings was recognized in '18. In other words, when we projected what it is for '19, we projected a savings.
Look at the retirements that are coming up, and so you can give a little projection of that. So this is telling us that we're having fewer teachers, we had fewer teachers retire from 2018 going into 2019 than we had from '17 into '18.
That's what we're expecting, yes, sir.
Got you. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions for Ms. Barnes?
Just one more comment. I'm not criticizing what we're trying to do. I'm just trying to understand the, you know, sort of the mechanics of how this works, and I have a better understanding about it now. Thanks.
Questions?
I just have two comments. I just wanted to thank staff and appreciate them for identifying the safety issues, and so it's wonderful that we're able to address safety issues with end-of-year spending. And then just wanted to make it clear with the ability to purchase additional buses, that keeps us on track. So we're not ahead of schedule. We will always need buses, and so that just keeps us on track.
Right. And since we do have 23 buses that have in excess of 250,000 miles.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Okay, the next item is 6.2 Advisory Committee Appointments. This is the time of the year when the school board encourages community involvement to participate in our advisory committees. So we have received applications for our Special Education Advisory Committee, our 21st Century Career Tech Learning Committee. Students have percolated up through the three high schools to serve on our student advisory committee, and so those are under consideration, and we will vote on those applications at our next meeting. The 21st Century and Career Tech Committee is specifically looking for a labor spot, so that we're still in need of community volunteers. So if the listening public has an interest in serving on one of our committees, there's an opportunity. So you could reach out to Ms. Val DePaula through central office, and CAC also is continuing to take applications, Special Education Advisory Committee. So unless there are questions about that, we'll revisit that at the next board meeting. And so the next item, 7.0, 7.1 Capital Development Committee's Recommendations for the CIP for 2018, or 2020?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, the Capital Improvement Development Committee creates a proposal to bring to the board, and Ms. Barnes was chairing that committee this year, and she's going to bring the recommendations of that committee to the board for the 2020 Capital Improvement Plan.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Board members, and Dr. Heron. As we begin the fiscal year 2020 budget process, you'll recall that several years ago, the process for determining the capital improvement budget was pulled forward into the planning and approval process of the operating budget, so that WJCC would be able to provide its needs to our funding partners with adequate time to prepare their budgets and allocate the resources needed to fund the school division's projects. As I present to you this evening, it's important to keep in mind that this presentation represents the recommendations of the Capital Improvement Plan Committee and is a preliminary look at the needs and applicable costs for those needs of the school division. So the administration with the operations department will continue to evaluate and fine-tune projects and alignment of those projects. So the information presented represents that of a working document that will evolve through the school board's approval in December and possibly even into the final adoption in May. So the Capital Improvement Plan Development Committee was formed this summer and consists of the positions above, and this represents both internal and external stakeholders. The four community members whom we were very fortunate that they volunteered their time to this committee included Michael Willen, who represented the PTA, Van Dobson, the facilities director at William &amp; Mary, Robert Underwood of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, and Dr. Randy Casey Rutland from Newtown Management. So as I mentioned, the process began this summer to ensure that there was adequate time to, prior to the operating budget development. So the results from the meetings of the newly-formed Long Range Master Planning Committee were considered prior to the... considered prior to the final meeting of the committee. In our process and timeline, we've also built into the schedule time prior to the school board approval for the public to voice its opinion in two public hearings, and this timeline also allows the school board time to review the recommendations prior to its approval in December. Principals were asked to submit requests for their projects, operations was asked to provide information on the division-wide projects as well as routine maintenance schedules. The committee then reviewed and evaluated the requests to determine whether projects met the criteria to go forward as capital improvement projects. So, the committee met on three occasions. They reviewed the requested projects as well as the report from the Long Range Planning Committee. To provide context, the committee was also presented with enrollment and capacity analysis, both current and future. Now, by current, I mean the current, the most recent that we have. We'll also have this fiscal year projection sometime in November. We've also reviewed the current year's approved capital improvement plan. So, the committee reviewed each project as to the urgency of the project. For example, if the project represented a solution to address a safety issue, it was brought forward. Also, CIP projects must have an estimated cost of more than $50,000. Some items were brought forward have fallen under the $50,000 threshold but were deemed important, so determination was made as to whether the project could be addressed using operating budget funds, or could be considered in the division's year-end spending plan. To ensure open communication, it's also my plan to share the outcome of the decisions made with the cost center managers and the principals who have submitted the requests on behalf of their buildings and staff. The items here actually are just points of reference and information. The county and city adopt a five-year CIP with the P standing for plan, but the funds are appropriated on an annual basis. So during the fiscal year '17 process, the school board began developing a 10-year plan, and this enables the division to project and plan for future needs beyond the five-year plan. And it also gives our funding partners adequate time to, and opportunity to prepare and budget for capital projects. As funding is appropriated annually, tonight, our initial focus is on the fiscal year 2020, which is the next budget year to need appropriation. That being said, we'll concentrate on the changes from the fiscal year '20 CIP that was adopted in the fiscal '19 plan. So we'll also review modifications to the current plan that it may have arisen from need or the changes in cost estimates. So the estimates for projects in the Capital Improvement Plan include 10% for A&E, 5% for contingency, and an escalation rate of 3% per annum. And a new project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new updated information, say, for example, new state requirements or mandates, or for safety reasons. As we begin to look at the modifications or additions for fiscal year 2020, there are a few projects for which we've mentioned in the year-end spending plan. Currently, there are included in both proposals pending the approval of the year-end spending plan in November by our funding partners. If the projects are approved with year-end spending funds, then we'll remove the projects from the Capital Improvement Plan, as Dr. Heron explained earlier. In looking at some of the modifications in the 2020 CIP, the well at Berkeley Middle School is currently in the fiscal year 2021 plan and has been included in the CIP several times since fiscal year '16 and has been pushed back. However, it's been brought to the committee's attention that it has the potential of becoming a safety hazard. So it's the committee's recommendation to move this project forward to fiscal year '20, and we've also received a revised estimate, and there's an increase of $1,753. Also included in both year and year-end spending plan as well as the CIP is the entrance redesign for Jamestown High School. As mentioned earlier, we're thankful to our funding partners for the advancement of funding that enabled WJCC to move forward the school entrances to fiscal year '19. Each of the other schools have the funding obligated or designated to address this, or they've had the redesign completed. So the estimated cost for the redesign at Jamestown is $128,600. Another urgent project that was recently presented to the committee as a safety concern is the need to replace the track at War Hill School. Severe weather this past year has aided in creating tripping hazards, and thus making the track unsuitable for use as well as unusable for competitions. So the recommendation of the committee was to regrade and replace the track, and the estimated cost for this is $509,250. In the next few slides, I'll review with you the information that was provided to the committee, as well as the courses of action that were presented by the Long Range Planning Committee. So this you see many times, but it's our enrollment projection from last fiscal year as our enrollment is tracked as of September 30th, and we'll be looking, as I mentioned earlier, at the new projections in November. So, the information here takes into consideration our pre-K enrollment. The blue areas indicate years in schools for which we're over 85% capacity but less than 90% capacity. The yellow indicates years in schools for which we're over 90% capacity but less than 100% capacity, and the red areas indicate years in schools where we are over 100% capacity. So as you can see, we're currently utilizing 98.3% of our capacity across all elementary schools, and we're projected to be at more than 100% in fiscal 2026. So this brings us to two courses of actions that were presented by the Long Range Master Planning Committee. WJCC could either construct a 10th elementary school, or could expand one or more elementary The committee carefully considered each option and determined that it made more sense financially as well as logistically to build a 10th elementary school. We felt that the expansions would be a temporary fix and that redistricting would still need to occur, plus not all facilities are easily expanded. Also, the population and construction, as it continues to grow, it may become difficult to find available land on which to build a new school if you put that off. Also, expansions can be future options if needed. Previously, we had the elementary school included in the fiscal year '27, '28, but the pre-K population wasn't taken into consideration. So those students do take up, I mean, they utilize space, so they, it needed to be considered. The estimated cost to begin the project in fiscal year '20 is $38,533,221, and this covers the cost of design and construction. So the next area that the committee considered is that for the high schools. Above is the enrollment versus capacity for the high schools, and our total enrollment is currently at 96% of the total capacity, and the division is projected to be at 98% in fiscal 2025. So the courses of action that were presented by the Long Range Master Planning Committee included expanding the high schools, expanding Jamestown Cafeteria, constructing a fourth high school, constructing a new Lafayette High School and repurposing the existing school, or redistricting. So I'll come back to the expansions, but it was felt that just increasing the size of Jamestown Cafeteria would not address the overall capacity issue. The next few options posed the same sort of issues. Then, the cost to build a new high school is about $100 million. Plus, 100 acres are recommended for this, for a high school, and that would need to be located and purchased. So the final course of action was redistricting, and the committee is recommending expansion at each of the high schools. So, the county and city have placeholders in their capital improvement budgets for funding expansions in fiscal '21. The original plan for War Hill High School included adequate space for eight classrooms and has been increased to 12 to accommodate the move of special programs from Lafayette High School to War Hill. The recommendation was to move the expansion for War Hill High School to include the design portion into fiscal '20 and construction into fiscal '21. The total impact of the overall CIP for the expansion is an increase of $4,742,836. Also, this isn't part of the fiscal year '20 proposed project, so it's not highlighted here in this presentation, but the committee has recommended that an auxiliary gym be put in place at War Hill High School. With the expansion for classrooms, additional core spaces are needed, and also each of the other schools have one. So in the committee's recommendation document and budget, an auxiliary gym has been placed for construction in fiscal '21, and the estimated cost for the construction is $2,548,66. Okay, the second and third expansion are presented in the CIP to occur simultaneously. First, Jamestown High School expansion was included in the city and county's plan for fiscal '21, and as we're moving this project out a year to enable WJCC to house the current students during the War Hill expansion, the budgetary increase for the CIP is $579,174. Second, the committee recommends that the Lafayette High School renovation take place as originally presented in the fiscal '19 through '29 CIP, '28 CIP, sorry. And therefore, there's no monetary impact to the CIT, and I've just included this slide so that, to reassure all that the project is still in there, in the plan. So you have several documents at your seat, and the first document is a spreadsheet that shows you the budget, total budget, and how it's allocated by school, the one with the green and yellow. The other document, the Word document, the pretty lengthy one, contains the recommendations, and those projects are grouped, well, by project. So these next few slides simply summarize the Word document and allow you to see how the funding is being allocated for the next five years and how it's being utilized. So the first area we have is the HVAC repairs or replacements, as well as the door replacement because that has an impact on heating and cooling. So $16,324,511, or 17% of the total five-year CIP, is in HVAC repair, replace, and door replacement. And also, the ones that have an asterisk next to them are actually in the fiscal '20 projects in that year. So moving on to our roof replacements, refurbishments, and renovations for ours. 95% of the five-year budget, or $8,523,428, is allocated to roof replacements, repairs, and refurbishments. And this slide shows a multitude of projects, from the well removal and baseball field refurbishment at Berkeley Middle School, to walk-in refrigerator, freezer replacements for our cafeterias, to generator replacements and electrical repairs, and division-wide projects to include parking lot and sidewalk repairs, fire panel, brickwork, and playground equipment replacements. And the total estimated cost over the next five years is $3,341,582, which is 3.5% of the total five-year budget. And we get to the new construction. This slide shows the estimated cost for each of the expansions or renovations of the high schools, a new auxiliary gym, as well as that for a new elementary school. The total cost for construction is estimated at $66,318,743, or 70% of the total five-year CIP. Now, this is just what's in the five-year portion of it. So this is the summary of our budget for our five-year plan. The total is $94,508,261. So to highlight our major projects again, in fiscal '20, this contains the design for the expansion of War Hill and the new elementary school. Fiscal '21 contains the construction of the War Hill expansion, the new auxiliary gym, and the new elementary school, as well as the design for Jamestown expansion and the Lafayette renovation. In fiscal '22, the construction of Jamestown expansion and Lafayette's renovation are So this is our timeline for our fiscal year '20 budget calendar, and the next step is we'll have a public hearing on October the 16th, and then we'll be discussing the options, and a second public hearing on the 27th, and approval on December the 11th. That's what I have for you as far as the committee's recommendations for this year's capital improvement plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. However, please remember, this is just the first pass.
There's one other document at your table as well, and it's a description and verification of all of the projects in fiscal year 2020, just to provide information on the year where we're actually asking for money.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Just a point of clarification, Dr. Heron, I know as a board, we're going to discuss this in depth at the November 13th meeting.
That's correct. If you have questions or need additional information, if you please send them to us, and we'll be able to get them to you prior to that meeting. These are the committee's recommendations, and then based on public input, then I will present my recommended capital improvement plan on the 13th.
November 13th.
November.
So tonight's not the intention that we'll discuss this as a board, so I guess if there are quick questions or folks want additional information, they could ask for that now.
Absolutely.
So I'll ask my colleagues.
I think there's a lot of information to digest all at once, and it gives the board time to really review and look things through and then ask questions, either tonight or at a later date when you've had a chance to review all of the information.
So is everyone comfortable with discussing this on November 13th? No questions from Ms. Barnes right now?
I just have a question about, I noticed in several of the schools, it talks about partial refurbishment, which includes replacement of vinyl tile, mitigation, mitigation is getting rid of the tile, is that with the old tile?
I believe that's mitigation for water, to make sure there's no issues before you lay the new tile, and Mr. Snipes will tell me if I'm right or not.
Okay, thank you. And then, so, but what with full refurbishment? This looks like a lot.
While Marcellus, Mr. Snipes comes up here, I kind of reminded my husband of this. I said, if you take your car in, you know, do you have all of the hoses replaced, whether they need to be or not? So I think the partial refurbishment.
That's correct. Evening, school board chairs, school board members, and Dr. Heron. Partial refurbishment is just what it seems like. A full refurbishment of the entire school would cost an exorbitant amount that we, Dr. Heron was not prepared to put in this year. So we're doing, we'll go around the school, we'll see which carpets needs to be replaced, which tile needs to be replaced, which rooms need to be painted, because the school that we have that's probably the next in line, Stonehouse, is 20 years old. When you walk in the Stonehouse, you wouldn't know it. And so, we want to make sure that we are using the funds appropriately, and we just don't replace it just to be replacing it at this time.
This was also a recommendation of the Facilities Condition Index, that we actually take it a piece at a time. We don't want to replace the tiles throughout a whole building if they don't need it.
Sure, of course. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to bother you, I think.
So when I read War Hill Track, I get shivers about the Jamestown Track and what that budget looked like. Are we comfortable with the 509,000?
We are very comfortable with the 500. That quote was just received September of 2018 from a vendor who was on their cooperative that did the Jamestown Track. They gave us two estimates. This was the more fiscally efficient method, as well, it resolved some of our problems. The difference was laying down a latex track rather than a polyurethane, and so we went with the latex because that's what we used at Jamestown.
Okay, and so that'll make it back for competition?
It'll make it back for competition, and currently, right now, you know, the coaches are working with it for practice, but it's not usable for competition.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Snipes or Ms. Barnes?
Moving on to item 7.2, WJCC Schools presenting the 2018-2019 Equity Series, School Accreditation and Academic Progress.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Mr. Thorpe and Dr. Worley will present our accreditation results and our SOL results, and also begin to talk about some of the things that we are going to do as part of our new strategic plan to address some of our challenges in the areas of academics as well. So, Mr. Thorpe, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron.
This evening, Dr. Worley and I will present the first of this year's Equity Series, which will focus on Virginia's new standards of accreditation and our school division's achievement with SOL performance outcomes from the 2017-2018 school year. As a part of this evening's presentation, we will share the data and a few of our approaches to support students. As with our previous year's Equity Series, these regular presentations to you will outline how we are working to provide students with what they need in order to be successful. We would like to begin with some information about the new standards for schools being accredited in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The new accreditation standards were designed to be more detailed and thorough with respect to a school's quality. This year will be the first to reflect this new approach to accountability. Our schools' current school accreditation ratings are based on either the previous standards of accreditation or the new standards, whichever benefits the school the most. Some key changes in the new standards include giving credit to students who are making progress, accounting for the growth of English learners, narrowing achievement gaps and lowering absenteeism and dropout rates. The new, the new standards are comprised of these three indicators of quality: achievement of all students, achievement gaps, and student engagement. And performance on each school quality indicator is rated on one of these three levels. Level one, meets or exceeds standards or sufficient improvement. Level two, near standard or making sufficient improvement. And level three, below standard. For WJCC schools, school accreditation ratings for this year are based on performance from last school year. We are pleased to report that 100% of WJCC schools with data from last year are fully accredited. The first two quality indicators in school accreditation are based on pass rate targets in English, which incorporates both reading and writing, mathematics, social studies and science. The next slides show our division's pass rates in each of the major SOL content areas. As we look at this data, you'll see that some pass rates are relatively consistent with many reporting groups and while in others, there are some drops. What's clear to us are the apparent gaps in pass rates between groups. This continues to drive our work. As we have in the past, we benchmark our performance with these school divisions who are similar in enrollment and demogra, demographics and budget. This slide represents our school division's trend pass rates for all students over the past three years in the area of reading as compared to the Virginia State average pass rate over the same time period. Continuing in the content area of reading, here is a three-year trend for each WJCC student reporting group, along with the state average for each. In looking at the trend of the pass rates for SOL reading, you can see that the performance from 2017 to 2018 is relatively consistent. Here's a three-year trend of writing scores for all students. The writing SOL scores are comprised of the grade eight writing SOL and the end-of-course writing SOL. Here are trend English writing outcomes over three years as compared to the state. Math SOLs are given at the end of grades three through eight. In addition to these scores, student pass rates on the Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II SOLs count toward the school division's overall math SOL pass rate. There's a look at our three-year trends with subgroups in the area of mathematics. And while Virginia average pass rates in Algebra I have declined over three years, we have 60% of all Algebra I test takers at Lafayette who passed the SOL last year. Additionally, at Berkeley Middle School, pass rates in Algebra I fell from 99% in 2017 to 75% in 2018. And while grade three math SOLs still exceed the state average, pass rates in this grade have fallen nine percentage points in three years. These are areas that we have targeted. Social Studies SOLs are given at the end of grade four for Virginia, for Virginia Studies and grade eight for civics. In addition to these scores, student pass rates on the Geography, Virginia US History, World History I and World History II SOLs count toward the school division's overall Social Studies SOL pass rates. Here are trend results for our school division versus the state. Science SOLs are given at the end of grade five and grade eight. In addition to these scores, student pass rates on the Earth Science, Chemistry and Biology SOLs count toward the school division's overall Science SOL pass rate. Here are trend pass rates for all students, our division versus Virginia average. And here are reporting groups. Additionally, the state's new accreditation system emphasizes student growth and our school division also values student progress as well. We measure student growth with, with the measures of academic progress assessment called MAP. This is a computer adaptive test assessing student growth in the areas of reading and mathematics. Every grade three through eight student takes this assessment three times each year. Additionally, all students who participate in year-long Algebra I also participate in the math MAP. The expectation is, is that 50% of students to make their growth projection from fall to spring. And when we, when we look at this data, we can see that there are a greater number and percentage of students who are meeting their growth projection from fall to spring in the area of reading than there are, than there is in mathematics. Again, that validates some of the data points at which we've been looking earlier. Impacting learning and achievement remains a top priority for us and changing outcomes requires changing the right approaches. Certainly in the area of academic achievement, the strategies in Goal One of our strategic plan will help to address key opportunities with first-time teaching and learning. Two of our Year One strategies involve using formative assessment and growth assessment data to inform first-time teaching. We'll represent an overview of these strategies through the lens of a fictional grade four class. Here is Mrs. Phillips' class. Every child in this class and in all of our classes approach a unit of instruction with different backgrounds and skill capacities and skill levels related to what they're about to learn. And these backgrounds and skill levels vary by student and skill. Mrs. Phillips is about to begin instruction on the concept of fractions and specifically representing equivalent fractions. This shows the level of ready, of skill readiness with equivalent fractions with Mrs. Phillips' students before instruction starts. Our teachers and teams plan rigorous instruction that is based on the specific standard of learning objective. As compared to what Mrs. Phillips' students are ready to learn, here's where the rigor of the standard is. If first-time instruction begins there with that red arrow, then there will be some kids who can't access the skill because they're not ready. And a few other students who may already have mastered that and they may be disengaged. To be clear, achievement gaps might not start here, but they do widen here. Through our Goal One work, we are and will be using formative and growth assessment data to inform teaching throughout instructional units and to set the stage for learning in smaller groups. With Mrs. Phillips' grade four class and based on what we know about these students' readiness to learn equivalent fractions, here is what each of these groups would learn first. Our students in the farther from proficiency, they would use tiles or models to represent fractions. Our group of students in the close to proficiency group, they would identify fractions equivalent to one using a number line. Our group in the green, the proficient group, they would write fractions in simplest form. And our students in the blue, they're ready to, they're ready to apply the skill. They're going to add and subtract fractions with like denominators. This is just one thread in the fabric of our Goal One work this year. Dr. Worley's going to step on up here and share some other supports that we are offering our schools and students.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Herron. As Mr. Thorpe shared, we are implementing action steps to promote growth and also continuous improvement within our schools. I want to take a time to highlight a few of our strategies as seen on the slide there and interventions that we have for the year. First is our collaborative team structures. We have teams in our schools and departments that are working collaboratively to select priority standards. Additionally, we are identifying specific strategies to address students performing below proficiency. We also are utilizing equitable funding this year. We have set aside funding to provide resources to support our focus areas. The funding follows needs as highlighted with our data. You also see the math coach there. We have plans to use equity funding to hire a math coach to support our immediate needs in schools. Again, this support will follow our data. Equity strategies with school improvement planning. Every principal facilitated the afternoon division professional development session getting to the heart of the matter on August 23rd at their home schools. This message allowed time for individual schools to focus on building needs and to create an equity strategy to support one of their school improvement goals. And finally, we have targeted professional development. Some of the specific PD sessions that we have this year are focused on small group instruction with our, at the secondary level, growth mindset training and student goal setting across K-12.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. We aren't waiting long to determine how well these approaches are working. We are monitoring our strategies at three interims, fall, winter and spring. We're prepared to adjust our supports as needed based on the performance indicators that we're seeing. Of course, in addition to the important first-time teaching and learning about which I explained earlier, we are providing early remediation and intervention for students who are struggling. As stated earlier, the inequitable outcomes continue to drive and focus our work. Acting on achievement gaps takes place at the student level because we have individual students who are not meeting success. Following the strategy work of our strategic plan, it is the expectation that practices and outcomes will elevate beyond excellence. That is the presentation that we have for you this evening. Dr. Worley and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Thorpe and Dr. Worley, other questions?
So when I'm looking at all of this, for example, I'm looking at what are kind of areas of high concern and I'm assuming it would be, when I look at page eight, the history in social sciences where we're just flat, I don't know what the, you don't have the slides actually, yeah, you don't have your slides numbered, but it's page eight here?
Is that it right there?
No.
Oh, sorry.
It's, uh, it's the one before that, yeah. So assessment year 1718, I'm assuming that is a concern, right? Because in all of the other comparison slides between WJCC and the Virginia pass rate, we're, we're kind of ahead, but on that one, we're flat. So am I to, when I read that, am I to assume that this is an area of concern, that you're going to be, I mean, I know, I know in our budget, we wanted a social studies coordinator full-time, we don't have that. I mean, are these the kind of things that you're going to be attacking, I guess?
Yes, ma'am. Along with safety, learning is our chief priority. That data point is not satisfying to us. And I can tell you that we have honed in on some areas of concern within the, within the whole social studies content area. For instance, in Virginia Studies, we were down three points from 2017 to 2018. And in Virginia US History, we were down five points from 2017 to 2018. These are two areas where we can hone in on some opportunities for some improved instruction and learning. In the area of civics, we're up three points, okay? So again, we're drilling down and also not just to the content level, but to the, but to the school level and to the teacher level as well.
So when we're looking at possibly being in danger of losing accreditation at a particular school, we're looking at these, this kind of a data point, right? To, to go, whoa, we've got a, that's an area, we really need to...
This is big picture, but as Mr. Thorpe said, we're looking at the layers beneath, literally down to the classroom level and even down to the content piece that students are not mastering. And some of our progress data through the MAP data will provide early indicators and we're monitoring that to see exactly what we need to do. And if first-time instruction is not working, we're going to start interventions earlier as well.
And then also, I guess these numbers don't reflect our increase in certain populations. So for example, our increase in English learners and how that increase makes it more difficult to see progress from year to year, is that correct?
Yes.
If you notice, that's one of our sub-populations that is underperforming in almost every area. And that is an area that is a great area we're focusing as well.
And that is not a static group. It's a, it's a group that we keep getting more and more of these kids that are coming into our school system, so, okay. Additional questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. What I've noticed is that the tests have changed, but we're still making the same kinds of comparisons that we have for the last 15 or 20 years in terms of those various groups. Those are average, averages and then are we going to, are we going to do the same thing that we've done in the past, which is extrapolate from those average scores down to the individual student? I hope not, because that hasn't, it hasn't been very successful over the years. The other thing, the other question I have is, and I know this is a real challenge, is, is I remember when Steve Staples came to the Hanta Rhodes Educational and Technology Association Committee last year and he talked about how the state assessment was going to change. And I'm not seeing it change. What I, what I am seeing is now that if you make progress, you get credit now. It's not, if you don't hit the cut score, you're in trouble. It's, no, so that, that's changing. We're actually, I'm actually going to hear from the current state superintendent tomorrow at that same meeting and that'll be a question that I'm, I'm not the only one, there're going to be some other ones asking it. The other, the other thing I have, the other question, and I'm so glad to hear about small group instruction, which has only been around 100 years. I'm sorry. You, you have to, can I assume, you know, I saw little heads, that what that... that what that, um, what that suggests is that we're going to go to mixed ability grouping? So that we have different levels of kids in each classroom, which I think is appropriate? Or are we going to, the really highly proficient kids, are they all going to be in one classroom? And the ones that are lower going to be in another one? You know, I think the mixed ability grouping, it has, certainly it has challenges. It has challenges in terms of how you organize the classroom. If you're working with this one group, what am I going to be doing with the other? And these are age-old, you know, issues and challenges. And so I'm really looking forward to whatever the equity strategies are because it's going to, you're going to have to address exactly the same things that we've been trying to address, you know, for, for years. And one other, one other thing I would say is, and you can ask any teacher, any principal, we know who those kids are that are being challenged, have problems, aren't making the bar, whatever it might be. So, you know, the testing is all good. But in, ultimately, the proof is going to be, once we know who these kids are, and of course, we do know who they are, what are we going to do? What's the, what are we going to do to help them advance, move along, be successful, whatever it might be? Because my whole career dealt with how to deal with those kids who got left behind. They just, you know, couldn't, couldn't make it, and it was mostly in reading and writing. So I'm, as you're going to imagine, I'm very, very interested in, in seeing how you're going to deal with that, not just at the elementary level, but it's extremely important at the middle school and high school level as well. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a paradigm changer, isn't it? You're going to have to, we're, it's not going to be the same old, same old. We're going to be doing some new stuff, different stuff. So I'm, I'm, you know, I can't wait, and I'm, and I'm really excited about the fact that, you know, that you're, we're really taking, really making, not just a concerted effort, but it's very, it's very intense, and it's, and it's specific, and I completely support that. I'm, that's, I just want to, I'm, I'm waiting for the equity strategies.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Are there additional questions or feedback? Ms. Young?
Just thinking what Ms. Hummel said about our history in social studies, where is there? What kind of strategies, I mean, maybe you can't give me specific answers tonight, but with our English learners, what kind of strategies are we using to help them understand? I mean, I mean, I assume this is history at, I was, I did not write down the, the grade levels that they're tested on. Can you tell me that?
Sure. Again, I'll answer your second question first, so that's grade four for Virginia Studies. And I have to look down at my notes, Ms. Young, don't have that memorized. Grade eight at civics, and then we've got geography, Virginia US History, World History I and World History II. And to answer your first question with respect to English learners, and I'm going to share some universal approaches that, that we're incorporating right now, and it can speak to the content area piece. We are providing professional development opportunities for, for the content area, content area teachers who are serving our English learners. And in those specific training opportunities, it equips teachers to be able to plan and facilitate lessons that include academic language and the content. And that helps to get at the, at the social studies material about which you're speaking. Additionally, to increase content language instruction by our ESL teachers, in addition to instruction in the four language domains, which are reading, and writing, and listening, and speaking. And then at the elementary level, there is a resource that we incorporate. It's called Imagine Learning: Language and Literacy. And this is a computer-paced module that helps to improve students' capacity with those four domains. And we aim to provide anywhere from twenty to forty minutes per week for identified Ls in elementary schools with that program. So those are just three things that we're doing to increase the language capacity of kids that will eventually help our students to be more successful in science, social studies, mathematics.
If I could add to that, if you remember in the budget last year, the, the Board approved three additional ESL teachers, because we were grossly understaffed to serve our English learners. And those have been allocated to the schools with the greatest need. And we will need to relook at that again this year, so we're, we're fully have this staffed really to serve our students. But we've started that journey because we saw some of the issues, we weren't staffed to, to help the students.
Thank you, thank you very much. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, just one more question. I know that, because I, I talked to Mr. Napolow about this last year. And I know that we're using, or have been using, some of the activities and, and strategies laid out in the PSYOP model, which is a, which is an approach. That's why they use it all across the country for English language learners. Are we still, is that, where, where are we with that? Is that, because it's not, it's not that it's so designed for the ESL teacher. It's designed for the regular classroom teacher who has kids. Their English is, and may not be a primary language.
Training in the PSYOP model continues to be offered to division-level staff.
No additional questions?
I just wanted to share that while our division is a high-performing division, it's, it's clear that we're being transparent and that we obviously have opportunities to, to grow, particularly with subgroups. And so as Dr. Beers mentioned, I'm, I'm eager to see the progress that our division makes. And then wanted to point out that with one of the key changes with the standards of accreditation is, is looking at student growth. And I know our division, actually, Mr. Thorpe brought it to us a few years ago, brought MAP testing to us a few years ago. We didn't always measure that, but we've been measuring student growth for a few years now, but even before it was required by the state. And so I just wanted to point out that, that we are ahead of the curve in, in some areas. And so thank you for, for bringing that to us.
Okay, next are policies.
A solid. Do you want me to take this?
So yes, eight point one revised policy, BDDE, Rules of Order.
Yes, who do we have standing up? Is anyone standing up, or is it?
This is, this is ours.
This is ours, oh.
This is ours.
I will stand up. I will sit down and say that I think this is fine, there's nothing we had to do with this, right? Red line. We didn't make any changes?
Changes.
So, yep, no changes.
So these are just to discuss, and then we'll vote on them at the next meeting. So the next policy, eight point two revised policy, BDDG minutes. That's also a board policy.
It's a board policy, and what we did here was basically align this to VSBA. Yeah. Want to have any questions?
Moving on, eight point...
Wait a second. So, so, thank you, Madam Chair. The, says the minutes will be kept in accordance with Virginia law. Does that mean that we, what does, what does that mean? Does the Virginia law require us to keep a hard copy? Does it require that it can be kept online?
Ms. Sersa?
It would be per Code of Virginia requirements, and those sometimes change with digital records now.
Yeah, so, so have they changed so that we don't have to keep hard copies now? They all can be digital, or do we know?
I'm not quite sure on that.
Okay, that's fine. But, but it does, it just says we're going to keep the minutes in accordance with Virginia law. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there additional questions about that policy? Okay, moving on, eight point three revised, revised policy, EBA, Safety Issues and Reporting of Hazards.
That was, who was that? That was, um, Sallis, but, Mr. Snipes, but I don't think we...
Make any changes?
We didn't change anything. We didn't make any changes.
So do we have to vote on it?
Um, well, yes, because we, it's important that we review it.
I'll make any changes, I mean, I don't...
I think we're going through the cycle of review, so it, it's on record now that the Board has actually reviewed the policy.
We don't have to reapprove it, because it's already approved.
Probably not.
But how do you, when do you, do you mark it, Ms. Sersa, as being reviewed?
Yes.
And so it doesn't need to be voted on, it's just, but you can still mark it as reviewed, and we're okay to go on for next, so it doesn't need to be in the consent agenda?
So we'll pull that one?
Okay. So we can pull that one and the first eight point oh one?
Okay, item eight point four revised policy, ECA, Inventory and Reporting of Loss or Damage.
Talk about this one, I think we have to go back, because I think we changed an eight point, something in eight point oh one.
What did we do? What?
I believe the change is this one, but...
Rules of Order? We didn't change anything on Rules of Order.
Uh, there's a red lines on it.
We updated...
Virginia Code.
Virginia Code.
So do we have to...
So then we have to vote on that one.
Oh, because, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly, you should be, you should be the parliamentarian.
Moving on, Mrs. Hummel.
Eight point four, Mr. Snipes, Inventory reporting of loss or damage.
Yes, this was a review of the, the policy. This policy was adopted in 2010. Of course, it was reviewed by our policy committee and was reviewed by the attorney. There is no changing with our practice or our process.
We can pull that one, Ms. Sersa, and just stamp it reviewed?
That's, which one is that?
This is...
Inventory reporting.
Yeah, right, got you.
You good with that one?
I am good with that one.
Everyone good with that one? Okay, then item eight point five revised policy, GAA Staff Time Schedules, Mr. Baker?
The only, the only thing that changed in this was just the attorney going through and changing some of the, the wording slightly from, I mean, yeah.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Heron. This policy, GAA Staff Time Schedules, was adopted in 2008. The attorney has reviewed it, the policy committee reviewed it. We considered this policy as part of our normal review, not because of any issues that have been brought up. Nothing's changing with our practice or our process. We did change the term employees not exempted to non-exempt employees, it's more common. And we did change the term school district to school division. Again, nothing else was changing in our, in our, with our practice, it's just the normal review.
Questions for Mr. Baker? Okay, moving on to item eight point six revised policy, GDVB Overtime Pay and Holiday Pay.
This policy was adopted in 1986, but was last revised and reviewed in 2008. The attorney has reviewed the policy, reviewed with the policy committee, just considered part of our normal process of review. There is no VSBA policy, GDVB. Nothing, again, is changing with our practice or our process. We did update the term Pay Scales and Classification Book from Pay Scales and Supplemental Schedules, just the book we vote on every year, so we changed the term. We defined the work week to be consistent with GAA, which is twelve AM, AM, Sunday night until eleven fifty-nine AM, eleven fifty PM on Saturday, as the work week. At the end of the policy, we did update the information regarding time sheets to say that non-exempt employees are required to record their time. We did not want to put in what type of system or the process of the time clock, as those change over time, just that they have to record their time. Even though there is no VSBA policy, we did want to keep this policy because it does have good information that wasn't being captured in any other policy that I'm aware of. And again, nothing is changing with our practice or what our expectations.
Any questions for Mr. Baker? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, so those will be on the consent agenda. The next item, action items, Personnel Actions, is there a motion to approve Personnel Actions?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the Personnel Actions as presented this evening.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Sersa?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
And the next item, ten point one, Board Member Comments. I'll start with Ms. Young. Sorry, Ms. Taylor? Sorry.
Okay, and just a quick thank you to the citizens who came out to speak with us this evening about some difficult topics. I appreciate them coming here to share their concerns with us, and we take safety very seriously. So no administration will look into that for us. So thank you. Thank you to everyone who presented and all the, the hard work of the staff. Appreciate it.
Ms. Young?
First of all, I just want to second what Mrs. Taylor said about the safety issues and the concerns at our new middle school. I'm sure administration is looking into that and will take action. I, I feel very troubled about it at the moment because we, we have very high hopes for all of our schools, including James Flair. Secondly, I want to thank Smith Memorial Baptist Church for presenting a presentation on sextortion that I attended on Sunday, which was very interesting and important for students between the ages, which is the age that is basically targeted, is between eleven and seventeen. So if you are a student who has become involved, it's not just sexting we're talking about. We're talking about people coming back at you and then wanting you to do things that are inappropriate, that you're already feeling upset about, and then threatening to do a number of things, either harm your family or, or bullying you, or just threatening you to take it to social media and telling all your friends and your family. If you are involved in that, please make sure you contact, talk to your parents, first of all. Or if you don't feel like you're able to do that, please, please talk to a school counselor or another adult which you feel comfortable with, because this is a very serious issue. One of the things that came out is that she said that at every FBI division across the United States, they could use a hundred agents for every single one to solve this problem. And they specifically spoke about two cases where one person who was thirty years old had sextorted three hundred and fifty young people. And, and now that person has been prosecuted and is spending a hundred years in prison, and certainly deserves to be there, and the other person was thirty-five hundred. So you're not alone. There are more than you that are being involved in this, so please seek some help and some counsel. And please don't let it get to you to the point where you feel like there's no, no out. And for school, as a member of the school board, I was very disturbed that, that the age group, because you think of eleven-year-olds being involved in something that they have, they're, they're so young. And then even our seventeen-year-olds, although they are becoming an adult, they're not there yet, and they, they need our support. So I again want to thank Smith Memorial Baptist Church and Greg Dowell, who's the administrative assistant there for bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, a couple of things. I, I would remind the public that as they, as we move forward with our, this latest CIP calendar, that you look really carefully and think about what you want to see in your schools over the next ten or fifteen years. Do you want to expand existing schools? Or do you want to build additional schools to keep enrollments down in the other schools? It's a question that was raised before when we built War Hill High School. And I just think it's, my feeling is, we need to listen to the public in terms of what they would like to see happen as we go forward, as enrollments continue to grow. The other thing, I, you know, I was really disturbed by comments made about James Flair Middle School. And I know it's a brand-new school, and I know we're still trying to, you know, sort things out, that sort of thing. things out, that sort of thing. But the attitude, the outbursts, the mocking, it's going on all across the country. So we shouldn't be surprised that kids are acting like that, to the point of physical abuse. I remember when I was in the seventh grade, and one of the little kids in the seventh grade, a couple of the big guys used to stuff him in the trash can. Or used to pick him up and put him on top of the student mailboxes so he couldn't come We can't tolerate that kind of behavior at all. And the idea that a student who did something like that was then allowed to get on a bus and go home, I dare, I have, there is no excuse for that. We need a zero tolerance, I think, with that. And if it means we've got to really tighten up, it's very unfair to the 90% of all the other students in that school who were impacted by that kind of behavior. And, but the other thing, I, you know, going back to that Tommy Wheeler, that was his name. A lot of us stood around and watched it happen. We didn't do anything about it. And I imagine a lot of kids stood around and watched that happen. And we shouldn't do that. We shouldn't tolerate that. And, you know, going back, I feel really badly because I've been haunted over the years by Tommy Wheeler. I never knew what happened to Tommy Wheeler. But I just can't imagine what it was like to be the butt of so many of those just inexcusable actions against Tommy. And I, we can't tolerate that here. We just can't tolerate it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel?
I wanted to, first of all, start on a positive note by thanking, thanking Dr. Heron for showcasing the partnership that we had with William &amp; Mary, with the William &amp; Mary volunteers in the Griffin Project. I think that it's heartening to see such dedicated future teachers and that they're willing to volunteer their time. And I, especially when, when we saw the presentation about having to split groups up and do kind of individualized group learning, I think partnerships like William &amp; Mary's partnership, it's great. So I just want to compliment the school division and William &amp; Mary on that, on working together in that regard. I want to compliment and thank the committee that worked on the CIP. I think that that, there's a lot of thoughtful discussion that I'm sure occurred to lead to the CIP that we saw tonight and the decisions that came about. So, along with Dr. Beers, I do want to encourage people to come to our meetings when, when they're announced and give their opinions about things. But I really appreciate the hard work that was done by the committee and the results that you shared with us tonight. And finally, I'm, I want to, well, on my good note, I also want to thank Dr. Thorpin, Dr. Worley for their work on how we're going to deal with the accreditation process next year. I think they've got a plan in place. I will trust that they will put the resources where they need to be, and we will be looking at a fully accredited division again next year. So, those are my good news, good thoughts. I am also incredibly distressed by the comments that we received tonight. It's just a, it's distressing. It's distressing that what should be a, it's a brand-new school and there should be, it's the excitement that goes along with being in a new school with your friends and to have what seems to me to be a couple bad eggs that, or bad apples that are just making life miserable for the 90, I want to say probably 98, 99% of the students that are wanting to come to school to learn. We do have to get control of that. So, and I'm sure that plans are being put in place to do that, but time is of the essence. And I think these parents and these students need to see some really dramatic results quickly.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Mr. Kelly?
Oh, yeah, I have nothing added about the James River, or the James Blair speakers tonight and agree with the comments made by other board members. I would also like to, to just recognize the James River Elementary student that came tonight and sitting up here and talking without notes, and I was, dude rocks, so that's great. I know. Jumping off from what Dr. Beers said about the public hearing on the CIP, I'm hoping that the administration will do, do enough, do a lot to promote that public hearing. I think it is important that we get public comment and input on the proposed elementary school and the high school expansions versus building a new high school and kind of get an understanding of what the public is interested in, in as far as what their direction of their public school is going to go on, not for the next 10 years, but probably for the next 30 years. Jumping off from where Mrs. Hummel was about the CIP and, and the good work that was put into develop that for us, I do appreciate that and the work of the committee and everybody in, who contributed to that. Dedication of James Blair is tomorrow night, so I hope we get a lot of, a good turnout for that wonderful, wonderful event for that school. And last thing I would like to say is that nice job pinch hitting in the last minute. Madam Chair, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks for all your support, everyone. I would just like to also thank the parents who came tonight. It's, it's sometimes difficult to talk about things that are, that are difficult, but want to share with, with the listening community that we do want parents to come and share their thoughts and concerns with us, and the board does listen. And so, I do feel confident that, that administration will, will be addressing issues at James Blair. But like parents lobbied for the auxiliary gem of Lafayette, it resulted in a gem, and parents from Warhill have come and spoke to us multiple times, and hopefully they've heard that that is now in the CIP, which hopefully will be voted on and hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll receive funding. But it's, it's, we heard parents, and so encourage people to come to October 16th meeting to share their thoughts about the CIP. And going back to Dr. Heron's announcements about partnership, I think one of the things that makes our school division a high-performing division is the fact that we have those community partnerships. And I wanted to, if people didn't know, The Next Door Neighbor featured Matthew Waley and their partnership with the Literacy for Life and the Impact 100 grant. And so, it's a great little article if folks haven't read it. Robin Ford came and presented to the board not too long ago and talked about their program for ELL families and students. And so, this is just a great article, and it made me proud to read it and know that, that our community works so well with our school division, and, and we couldn't be what we are if it weren't for our funding partners and for all of those who support us at multiple levels. So with that, we, the next item on the agenda are upcoming events. There's a SEAC meeting on October 11th next week. Policy committee meeting is meeting on the 24th. SEAC is in the James River, or the James City County Recreation Building. Policy committee meeting is meeting in room 309. And upcoming meetings, so closed session on October 16th in Building F at Mounds Bay. And then the public hearing will be at 6:30. Again, encourage folks to come and share their thoughts and concerns about the CIP. The regular meeting will then continue after that on the 16th. We have closed session on November 13th here in room 309, and then work session following in room 300. And then agenda items for the next meeting, we're gonna.
Everything from night, tonight just moves through?
Just moves through.
Okay.
So unless there's anything else, I'm ready to hit the gavel. One time, I've been told. This meeting's adjourned.